I call our meeting to order. We have one addition this evening, I think. We are going to be adding on the Gilbert Hart Library onto our agenda this evening.
That's the bulk mail permit request.
The what?
Bulk mail permit request from Gilbert Hart Library.
Yes, okay.
So with one addition to our agenda this evening.
I'd like to suggest that we do a brief executive session at the end of the meeting to discuss a personnel issue that has come to my attention. And I'd like to ask Mr. Baker to attend that with us.
So and we're going to add that as well to the agenda.
Okay, everyone agrees.
Great. Does everyone agree? Okay. So we are going to be starting with the select board minutes of October 6, 2025. And I am abstaining from this.
I move you approve.
Second.
Aye.
We are now going to look at the pay orders for November 4, 2025. Is this the amount, the correct amount, Sandy? The amount is for $1,847,450.57.
Wow.
That's what happens when you pay half your education tax.
Yes.
Um, do I have a motion?
I move we pay the $1,800,000 plus.
Second that.
Thank you. Please look it over. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are now moving on to the road commissioner report.
Not a lot to report. Tiff Road is finished, pretty much. Got to clean it up a little bit. By the end of the week, it can open it up. Other than that's the only major thing. We've done some ditching and cleaning. Steve has on there and Sugar Hill. And has some more we're going to work on, Mother Nature provides. Most of the sand that's we're going to use for now is hauled, isn't it, Steve?
Yeah.
No sense putting it outside. They'll open up. They haven't brought any salt in, have they?
Nope.
I don't know when they're going to lug that in.
I get he's they've got the contract so they can order whatever they want.
Okay, then they didn't get that. Other than a bunch of maintenance things and stuff Steve's been doing on the trucks. And some road grating. I don't think there's a whole lot else going on, is there?
Yeah, the snow plows.
Snow plows, working on the snow plows.
Yeah.
How's the solar project?
Has moved an inch.
No interference with you guys?
Well, nobody's down here.
Who's certain?
That's it.
Looked at it a week.
Well, there's no money there. Government stopped.
Well, I mean, they got the panels already.
Nobody's going to do it because there's probably no money for it.
Well, this is our market.
Oh, okay. Well, maybe maybe they're just firing some person.
No, no, I put them together. No, I'm not.
Other than that, other than I don't know if you've done any research on that sand shed?
I yeah, I've done a bunch. I looked at the company that you mentioned, that Whitetail Construction. They look, I mean, it's funny, they advertise themselves as like a horse barn and pole barn construction. But they do commercial buildings and they're based in Pennsylvania, but this is in their territory.
Yeah.
They serve, and they have great reviews online. And I mean, you know someone who's used them, so.
Right, yeah. And they're and they're actually coming back up here to do another big building for the same guy.
Oh, okay.
And also I had I found online today out of Dundee, New York. Not quite sure where all that is. I looked hadn't looked it up yet. The gentleman did a steel building. The slab was poured. Or the concrete was poured, whichever. I don't remember what it was, floor or not. But it was a 50 by 80 building, just a little bit smaller than what we're looking for. Three overhead doors, two man doors, steel shell, wood framed, 12-foot walls, which we I understand is lower than we're looking for. But 70 grand, done.
Wow.
Some different than the bids.
Yeah, well, yeah, that's for sure.
So, you know, he's only talking, we were looking for was it 65 by 85? No.
60 by 100, I thought.
All the bids say 60 by 85.
Okay, well, whatever. I could be wrong.
Yeah, so it's that one's fairly close, other than the walls aren't quite up enough and the concrete work was done.
Yeah, so the concrete work is separate from that 70 grand?
Yes, I'm sure it is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, 60 by 80.
How much would the concrete work be about?
Oh, boy.
The other work is about 70.
I would say somewhere.
Adding on another 50, 25 to 50. Another 50?
Yep, 25 to 50,000, I think.
That's still 120,000.
Yeah, it's still.
Compared to.
It's still much less.
Yeah.
So the the most recent one, so I've been I've been going around and talking to some road crew foremen and stuff like that in the surrounding areas, surrounding towns. And Castleton actually had a big shed put up this year.
Yeah.
I think it was about a six-foot concrete wall with a metal shed over it. And then they put in three-quarter inch pressure treated plywood on top of the concrete.
Yep, for to keep material back on.
Yeah, exactly. But and they worked with a local company, Bud Carpenter Construction.
Bud Carpenter Construction, yeah.
Yeah, okay. But it was I was talking to Kathy and Sandy earlier this week. I was saying it was three something. It was a 385, actually. So it was on the upper range of three. But he so that's a lot more than you're talking about. But and the thing's pretty, I think it's 60 by 100. And it's it's got a paved floor. But he said it was like.
For a sand shed?
A salt.
Yeah.
I it's it's a little odd because it's so massive. I went and looked at it. And like, how how much salt can you possibly put in there?
Four or 5,000 ton in there. They couldn't possibly use that in a winter.
I when I went to look at it, I was like, and I didn't get to talk to him in person. I talked to him on the phone and then I went to look at it. But they've got sand just piled next to it. Which I'm like, the sand and the salt could probably fit in there. But in any case, it's a big shed. It's it's new. It was done this year. It seemed it would kind of meet our expectations. He said that he was really happy with the working with that construction company.
Yeah.
Said it came in under budget and ahead of schedule. So again, that's a lot. That's more expensive than 70 plus 50, whatever, for the foundation.
Yeah, even if it's even if say it's an equal, 70 and 70, for kind of still 150, less than 150,000.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, it's I think it's worth seeing if they'll give us a number for something like this. You know, saying it's going to be a next year's project.
Right.
And we will have concrete with buttresses in. And then get a go out with a price on concrete, too.
Yeah, yeah.
I there's so much variance here. I don't understand it.
Yeah, it's it's huge. It's a huge amount of variance. And I mean, I'm sure you know this. You know surround it. So a lot of towns don't even cover their sand.
Yeah.
And just have a salt shed. You know, so there's a lot of different ways to approach it.
Yeah.
It's been sort of a learning experience for me going around talking to these people. But yeah, certainly in that range, certainly below 500K and maybe way below 500K, it seems like we could get what we would need.
Yeah.
And it's and very have something very comparable to like the best that I've seen other other towns using them, so.
Yeah, it's
Put to yourself and marry any equipment.
Yes. What you really need to do is, you know, on is something like this is we'll go over and look at this building they built in Middletown, actually, Polat, I guess it is, Middletown, Polat line. It's actually Dambie, Middletown and Polat line.
Those three.
We can I know I go in and we can look at that anytime we want. They're good friends, so.
And a guy in Castleton said he would share the plans with us if we were.
Yep, that's something to look at, too.
Okay. So Glenn, you said something interesting when you were talking to Kathy and I about this. You said you would be interested in seeing and field opinion. Say, we just started the conversation on a new sand shed today. Forget everything we have.
Yeah, so.
Like, what what would you want?
I feel that's why I feel I just love saying to these guys, we I feel like since I've been here, the conversation's going around in circles a couple of times. And I thought it'd be interesting to sit down with you guys, blank sheet of paper. Like, starting like, we haven't talked about this before. What would you want? Like, ideal world, what would you want?
Well, Steve will probably say the same thing as we do. There's only so much area we have here.
Right, right.
You know, and going, I think that one's 65 or it's 50 wide by 75, I think, something like that.
80 by 60, bud.
80 by 50?
60.
60 by 50, that one is?
80.
80 by 50. So you see.
80 by 60.
Whatever.
Long and 60 wide. That's what I got.
Okay, so you're basically if you went a little wider, a little longer, you would gain quite a bit. But you can only go so much to the floor print of what the state tells you.
Right, right.
For your roof runoff.
Yeah.
Square surface area.
So what do you think we can possibly get?
So I think we figured that's about the best we could do, that.
The 80 by 65?
80 by 65?
Wood trusses, roof trusses?
Yeah, they could be wood.
Everyone I've looked at is a wood frame building.
Yeah.
With, well, I did actually, Pittsburgh has a hoop.
Yeah.
That's where it's called.
What was it? West Rutland, yeah.
Everything's basically metal siding.
Yeah.
With wood frame.
Right, right.
But it's not arch?
No, no.
No.
Years ago, you could do the arch ones. It was reasonable money. Now it's nothing.
That's why I went to talk to the guy in Pittsburgh. He said he didn't think it saved him any money to do like the hoop one and it tore in the first year. And they had to get it repaired and the repair is held. But but anyway. Yeah, and so many places have a separate salt shed.
Yeah.
And I like, that's what I was I was one of the things I wanted to ask you guys about, like, I know we're talking about putting the salt and the sand on the same building. Would is it better to have a separate, like, people, most people have a much smaller shed for the salt, you know? Salt holds maybe 1,000 tons of of salt, something.
Yeah.
But I like, I don't know. Yeah, I'm trying to think like, again, just thinking like, okay, what what could we do that would be affordable?
The other thought was Glenn brought up that most places don't even put their sand in a shed.
Yeah, I don't know if it's most yet, but a lot don't.
For years, Wallingford didn't.
Yeah, well.
For a long time.
This was 1996.
1996, this building was built when there was nothing.
So is that a viable option to not have a, is it better to have the sand in a shed?
You like this, you like to have it dry.
I think it's, I know.
It's a big issue when you come into the weather we're having, when you get 10, 11 inches of rain on it. And then what happens is when you get when it freezes, you might have two or three feet of that pile froze solid. And then all those chunks, you have to pick all it out, set it aside. So you're actually buying more sand for the winter use. And then the salt melts. You can use it again next year, but it's the same issue every year.
So the 80 by 65 then would work for salt and sand, correct?
Correct. That's what we figured. Because we we can't go very much bigger because of the surface area from the state. Issue being is we what we store, maybe 75 tons in that little shed now, if that?
In the salt shed?
Yeah, more than 50, probably.
Yeah.
So if you had something stored 150, 200 tons on one corner, one side of it, and kept our sand in the other, you'd still have.
Okay.
You need a bunker or something to?
How much, how much salt do you?
Maybe some cement blocks and make a little divider in it.
How much, how much salt do you use in a season?
We're 550 tons a year. That's what we're contracted for, so that's roughly.
550, you said?
550.
Yeah.
The contractor cargo says 550.
I mean, would it would it make sense if we to like, if we were building, if we could build a shed at an affordable price that was basically the size of what you got now to to build a separate structure for the salt? And would that make it that much easier for you guys or? And is and does it save us anything to buy instead of a shed that'll hold 75 tons, something that'll hold our whole season's worth? Is that?
You'd have to have a good-sized building for just the salt alone.
Right.
But if you took a good-sized sand shed and put a wall in between and had an entrance here and an entrance here for the sand and an entrance on this end just for strictly salt. Because I bring all the salt in into the shed with the loader because the when they built the shed, it's really, really narrow. It's almost just a little bit wider than a dump truck. And they bring it in with dump trailers.
Yeah.
So getting it in there is almost impossible. And I keep telling them to dump it right in front of the sand shed. And when we come in, I just take the loader and bring it into the shed. But now it's, well, I don't even know how short it is now because the whole back wall blew right out of it.
The one thing you have to remember here, we're in a different area than a lot of places. We're in a flood zone.
Right.
Any volume of salt that you have left over or bulked up and it gets flooded, it's junk.
Well, that's that's the other thing I was, because like, a couple of people I talked to is like, well, a salt shed is a lot more important than a sand shed because the salt's more perishable.
Oh, yes, very.
It's also.
More expensive?
It's more expensive.
Yeah.
And it can do more damage if it washes away. And I was wondering, do we need to do we need to worry about storing that somewhere where it's not going to be susceptible to floods?
Ah, I wouldn't. Because that's just more transportation.
How high a wall you're going to put on before you put the metal building on?
Hydro.
The four foot.
Four foot?
Yeah.
But still, you got to, it's going to be open in the front, right?
Yeah, it's going to be open. And the state wants you to put open, put drainable walls in.
Right, right.
So every so many square feet of surface, you have to have so many square inches of
Right.
holes in the wall. So no matter how you do it, it's going to get water in it.
Yeah. So let me just listen. This is just a crazy idea that, because I was trying to think like, where could we put it? And I know like having it in a separate place is is a pain. What about over by the the transfer station? Is that area that goes up there, even by where the knotweed stuff is, like back there? There's a fair amount of space back there.
I'm not sure how close you can get that to waterway as other than what we were permitted for.
I mean, it's it's.
Yeah, but it's the runoff in the river.
Yeah, and that just the distance from the river is going to be a problem.
Yeah, I I don't know a whole lot about that, but I got a feeling trying to set up a new salt shed in a water, a flood plain, quote unquote, might be an issue.
Yeah.
Now, if you were going to do it someplace up by the school here or, you know.
I just don't know where, you know.
Yeah, I don't know what the town doesn't own any other land. Fire district.
I was just thinking some of that, as you as you go above, like where the transfer station is, that might be out of the flood plain because of the elevation up there. But it could be an issue with still with.
Yeah.
That last flood was kind of strange because when it came down through the area between the sand shed and the salt shed was open. And it came down through and it went right between the two buildings and it forced it right straight to the garage. And as soon as I saw that happen, I told Lori to get the loader and take every bit of gravel we had in the yard and build a berm around the garage. So forced it out into the street.
I was just like, I guess, you know, my other my concern was like, we're going to spend a lot of money to build this thing. And then it's still going to be our sand, our salt is still going to be basically exposed if we have a flood. And I didn't know there's anything we could do about it.
We don't store very little through the summer. Maybe a load, 25 ton.
What I got in there now is the shed is about, eh, maybe three-quarters full. But, well, I say, I'll say half-full. Because what I do at the end of the year is if there's any salt left over, I put two feet of sand over top of it. And that keeps the moisture away from the salt. And then I just peel the sand off it, mix that with the sand we're bringing in, because I always mix a little salt with the sand. And and it saves the salt. It doesn't get ruined by rain or anything like that. I've been doing that for years.
Okay.
I'm not trying to second guess you guys. I'm just like, I've just been talking to a lot of people.
Don't worry.
I'd love to have a salt shed somewhere where it's up higher.
Yeah.
Well, this building will do what we need for multiple reasons because we don't have to buy, years past, when one of either was Pike or Wickham's over here or Pike and Dambie, they closed for the season. That was done. You couldn't get any more sand. Now you make a phone call. They line up four or five towns that need sand. They open for a day or two. And you can go get it. So there's no sense of purchasing purchasing it ahead of time when you can get it and put it right under the shed and keep it dry. Because we used to run it right out to the road. Steve's done that a couple of times. Then it's frozen. You got to handle it multiple times.
Yeah, yeah. The only thing that saved us last year is when I put all the chains on the grid on the loader. And of course, you load the trucks.
Yeah.
With the loader and that's what broke up the chunks better than anything. You could, there were times you could run over a frozen chunk of sand down there and it would just run right over it. With the chains on it, it acted like crusher and would break it all apart.
The couple that I've seen, they're they, some of them use poured concrete walls, others use just a stacked like waste concrete. I don't know, is are those cheaper?
They're $100 apiece.
Okay.
And they're two by two by six.
Yeah.
Figure out your volume. And you really, if you're building a wood frame, I would think they'd want one row below grade at least, if not two.
Hmm, yeah.
Just for movement. So I don't think it's any cheaper. I never actually counted up the blocks and figured it out, but.
Yeah.
And to get that volume of blocks is a tough thing for a shed that size.
And how are you going to seal it?
I mean, never going to seal it.
If you're using it for a salt shed, it's going to be like, you should put a bunch of holes in it.
It's funny, the one in Poltony that's actually made with telephone poles, like ours is.
Yeah.
But they put the metal around it, but then they put blocks inside.
Yeah.
But that's that's where they keep the sand. Their salt is somewhere, it's just a poured concrete.
Yeah. That keeps the stress off the poles. That's what happened with ours. The first year, they they planked it up from five or six feet, then they filled it and it just tipped. Poles right out of the top. They didn't have a strap there. That's why there's all the cables and all the
Right, right.
other strapping on the top of that one.
Right. All right. So I'm thinking, Sandy, I don't know. Should we see if we can get bids from, I don't, you said this place in New York State that?
I don't know. It's a place to look into. And this Whitetail LLC, I think it was called, that you looked into.
Right, well, you gave me the name. I just I looked them up online. I said they they have very good reputation.
Yeah. He goes, they go right from building to building, building.
Yeah. Anybody needs, anybody needs a horse barn, they can do that.
That building over there, like I said, was 30, I think it's 38 by 138 with a jog off the site of it. Four and a half days from the time they drove on the job site to the time they left. So, you know, sand shed like that, less than a week, in and out. Some people take, well, that's after concrete. Some people take months to do that.
So do you guys think that, like, they wouldn't do the concrete, someone else?
No, we'd hire that local.
Would we, can we manage that ourselves, like doing the concrete or do we like?
Concrete's fairly similar.
No, I mean, like coordinating.
For way less than a million dollars.
Yeah, I know, but I'm saying coordinating between whoever's going to do whatever site.
We haven't even tried.
Demolition, and then the concrete pouring, and then the then you have the last step is coming in and actually building a structure over that, is that?
Yeah, probably the three different contractors. So
Yeah.
you'd have to schedule it and make sure everybody got their.
It's not that big a deal. It's just a box.
Right, right.
If we have to, we can put the sand outside.
The sand will have to be gone.
Yeah, no, what I mean next year.
But I mean, someone's got to draw up plans. The poured foundation is the same size as the.
Yeah, well, the print, what they have to do is get, when you do the print for the foundation, it has to have buttresses in it. So on the outside, they stick out at a taper, two feet or three feet. So the weight of the material pushing against it doesn't just tip them over.
Right, right.
Even though it's in closed box, one piece, you still have to have buttresses on it.
Yeah.
So Glenn, I wonder what how Castleton managed it? Do they have a project manager to coordinate these things?
I don't know.
That would I, that's what I'd be interested in.
Did say they had Casellas do like the site prep and then they had maybe like Miles or something like that do the concrete work? I can't, I have a name written down.
Okay.
There was no concrete, no manager when we made the the shed we have now.
Right, right. But this is sort of like, I feel like we got more steps in here.
Yes.
And then the Bud Carpenter did the construction. So they used at least three vendors
Right.
to do the work. And I don't know.
Yeah.
I can I can ask him.
It's coordinated. I mean, maybe maybe there's an engineer on the select board and they felt comfortable doing it or or, you know, someone in town they hired to do it. I mean, that's kind of, you know.
That's the question.
What I was viewing like, say like an Anthony Ferruwe doing, he's not around here anymore, but somebody like that who would kind of take on that.
You might.
Pay them. If this is all going to be much cheaper than we expected.
Yes.
You may, maybe there's a little room for a project manager to make sure these things are coordinated.
Yeah.
Evan Fitzgerald, he's been amazing over the last.
Yeah.
Yes.
This is a much bigger project, so.
Right, right. But yeah, I mean, I can, I can, this guy, his name is Mike Jones. He's the Castleton Road Commissioner. I can call him back and see with that. But I think it might be, you know.
What we want to do about these bidders?
Do we just want to hold on to these?
The bids that we got.
We're not going to spend that money.
The the bids we got from some of the engineering?
It will, we can.
It just, I mean, after talking to maybe six or seven of the around town, the idea that we would spend a million bucks on this is
It's crazy.
I don't see the.
They'd be laughing at us.
Yeah.
Well, we don't need to respond to them, I guess. These these bidders.
I don't, I mean, I don't know how you normally handle it. If you just decline them or you don't respond.
You know, so.
Yeah, I know.
So we should probably answer, you know, that.
We're waiting for financials.
Huh?
Waiting for financials is all you got to say. Thing, loving cover us.
So that the one, the one in Castleton was the most recent one that I saw. It's this beautiful, I mean, if you think sand sheds are beautiful, it's like nice and brand new and everything is huge. And it was, you know, under 400K. So the idea that we would spend a million is.
Oh, no, it's ridiculous. And I can't believe they paved it.
Paved inside. Well, it's funny, I have, I might have a picture on my, it's it's like, there's like four piles of of salt in the back of it. And it was this huge thing.
That doesn't make any sense.
And he said, I think he said they use like 1,000 tons, which is, I mean, it's not going to fill that, come here to fill in that space, so.
Well, Glenn, thank you so much for all your work on this. This is very helpful and informational. And I think there's the the email that we need to email from Dustin Cummins.
Yeah. Um, should we, yes, we'll talk about that, too. Um, should we? I mean, do you want to to move this forward? Do you want, should we give like the contractor in Castleton the bit, the our bid sheet and just say?
We could do that. And I think I think also maybe.
The other one.
Whitetail and
Yeah.
how would we get the name of the of the, do you know, when you said Dundee, is that where the place is or?
Yeah, no, it's in Dundee. And I got the name of, I screenshot it this morning.
Yeah, I think that's, I mean, that's three three areas, three different vendors that we could contact.
Yeah.
Okay.
This is the inside.
You turn around a truck in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's overkill.
Yeah, that lot down there goes at an angle.
Yeah.
You don't have a little garage that's way up back.
It helps.
So.
Is that what you're reading?
That's the one I'm looking for, yes.
There's a sewer main out there, too. So there's.
If you guys have part of that walled off for salt, then the rest of it is sort of like this L-shaped thing. Is that going to be a problem, like getting the sand back in there?
No, the shed's going to be all open. We'll just put one corner of salt.
You're not going to have walls?
It's going to be a square box with an opening one end and an opening in the other.
So but I thought you said you wanted overhead doors and one one on one side and one on the other?
No, sliding doors. If we do anything at all with doors, it'll be sliding. We don't want to run electricity to it.
Right, okay.
Don't really need doors, huh?
No.
Like I said, that, if you kick that shed over, that'd give you a lot more room down there. You know, I'm not sure where your sewer line runs.
I'm not either. Something they'd have to figure out before we start building. We can get messy.
So, we're now gonna discuss the email that we have received from Dustin Cummins on Centerville Road. Um, and it seems that the issue is, is that, I remember talking about this with the trees.
I get it, I'm right.
And so, there's been a permit that was allowed for, um, a driveway?
A temporary access to a shed he was installing for a horse barn. And since he's come to me and asked for a permanent, to leave it permanently. I don't know if anybody goes up there, goes by this gentleman's house. I was up there this weekend to look at it. It's immaculate. I mean, the driveway's twenty feet off from his original house driveway, just enough to go by his buildings to his horse barn, where he cleared to have a horse paddocks and some horses, I guess. As far as the snow issue, I think that's an act of God. I don't think there's a lot we're gonna do about it. If anybody wants to go up there and look at it, there's plenty of trees left. He didn't, he clear cut where the pasture was and around the Beaver Dam. There was a forester involved with that. I don't know the ins and outs of whatever was happening to that, but it was done by a forester.
So he would buffer zone, buffer for the water.
Yep, whatever they did, it was done by a forester and forester managed it, so. It's not like this gentleman left a mess when he cut, clear cut this place. He's burned it, he cleaned it, stumped it, he burned it for the most part, cleaned it all up. He's painting horse pastures out of it. It looks really nice.
I guess their concern is that the snow is gonna drift right in and they're gonna be cut.
The snow's gonna drift on all of the roads.
We have roads that are way worse than that one. But, as Sandy has talked to Charlie, and I have talked to Charlie, that road, he said, does not drift anymore now than it ever did. And Charlie's been up there how many years? Twenty-five, twenty-six?
And, and the mistake is to think that the roads are always gonna be open. Always. They're not.
They're not. They're not, it won't be a hundred percent passable, cause it's just not possible.
You got thirty-five miles of road, three trucks, and it takes three and a half hours.
Fifty-two miles of road.
Just to open it up.
Fifty-two miles, fifty-two miles.
Fifty-two, I'm sorry, average, common gravel.
Forty month, forty of gravel.
It's a two and a half hours. Drift up top, up there at, uh, Timothy and, uh, Wallingford Line on that corner. Yeah, it drifts up there.
Oh sure, so.
What response are we going to make to this?
Centerville Road may get more than its share of snow.
I'm not sure what the gentleman is looking for. We can't predict when it's gonna snow. We, we can go up and take, and have Charlie check it more often. You know, that's one of the things we can do, but as far as trying to block the snow, whether it's trees, fencing, it doesn't work well.
No.
The situation.
So part of this is, um, the, the person who sent the email, it's their perspective on what's occurring.
Yeah, although he said Centerville Road residents, but he didn't name any of them and I started calling them up and I didn't find the same. Nobody, nobody said, oh yeah, that's the letter I, I sent.
Charlie's talked to some of the people up there and they said.
He mentioned, he mentioned.
I'm sorry Steve, I couldn't hear what you said.
Charlie has talked to some of the people up there, you know, off and on, and they all say, they don't have any problems and they think the place is beautiful. So much work done up there.
I think he did a nice job. I don't wanna take sides in this. I just know. As road crew town, uh, road commissioner and select board, we can't tell you it's gonna snow. Can't tell you that road's gonna be open a hundred percent. It's just not possible.
Only, only three inches and it's gotta stop.
We can go up and.
It's not gonna start till February.
You know, spend a little more. When we think it's gonna snow, try to get up there a little often, just to keep it.
He mentioned also the emergency vehicles and I know East Wallingford, Wallingford and, and the rescue squad, they get through, they'll get through that drift.
Believe me, there's times you're not going through it.
There's times.
And then there's times, nothing's going through it, as we found out, you know, and it's just, it's, it's mother nature. I don't know what we, what they wanna do about it, but.
Sounds like part of the issue is the, um, perception of that he only has a temporary driveway and we're, and he's being allowed to keep a long one, so that sounds like part of his complaint. That that needs to be clarified.
That, I will call him and tell him, cause he was supposed to read, he personally came to me and asked if he could have another, put that into a permanent driveway and I said, I think you need to go down to the Erica and have her redo the permit to a full-time one. And evidently, he hasn't, but he made out of it. Just, he might have forgot, just like we all.
Right, well, the writer, the email is under the impression that the permit's already been given, that the permanent driveway is already in. At least that's the.
The permanent driveway is in.
He thinks that it's temporary and it has not been removed. That it should be removed by.
Temporary permit was, I think.
Yeah, that should have been removed by October fifteenth.
Fifteen October.
Fifteenth of October. So, I don't know when he sent this letter. Or which one he sent.
What's the date?
The date on the letter is October twenty-ninth.
Alright, so he sent it two weeks later. So, we need to get the gentleman to command him, apply for permanent access.
Also, the writer is under the impression that the driveway is going to make the drifting situation worse.
Absolutely not. Absolutely not. This driveway is twenty feet from his original house driveway on his lawn. There was nothing changed there. Maybe a dead tree cut down or something next to the road.
driveway is on the lawn, the driveway does not go to the road?
The driveway does come to the town road. But it's, his house sits, and his, this driveway is literally within a fifty-foot buffer on his lawn. It wasn't like he cut this out through the woods or out through the pasture. It's on his lawn.
So an area that was already cleared.
It was already cleared, absolutely.
So it's not that all these trees were clean cut and that's where the driveway went, it's on a.
Between the gentleman's house, the driveway, there's a pond, a big pond. It's all wide open. Other than the hedgerow, trees, lawn, Centerville Road.
Who would be the right person to tell the driveway person to apply for a permit?
I will.
Alright.
Cause I, I, I mentioned it to him once and he's evidently, he forgot, so I will mention it again, then he's come down to file with Erica. And I will approve it, cause it's not even an issue.
Gotcha. And then we just need a response to the, Mr. Cummins.
Yep.
Are you gonna respond to Mr. Cummins as well?
I talk to him regularly. I will talk to him.
Okay. Okay. So we're good with this? Okay, thank you Phil. Anything else this evening?
No, I think I'm good. If I do, I have, I already forgot it.
Well, thank you.
I just crawled out from wondering if the dump truck down there.
Need Steve for anything else?
To what?
Need Steve for you?
No.
Okay.
So we'll see you next month for the highway budget?
No.
He said, Tony.
Yes.
We all wanna see Steve for the highway budget, right?
Right.
Which day is it following?
It's, I'll tell you right now. Highway budget is on December fifteenth.
December fifteenth?
Second Monday, or the third Monday of.
The third Monday?
Yes.
We meet the first and the third.
We got through this, didn't we?
I can at least remember that.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thanks Steve.
We are on to honorable mentions. Um, we'd like to, um, mention the Conservation Commission members for hosting a stick season spruce up in the village and for volunteering to water new plantings at the Elfin Lake Public Beach as part of erosion reduction project. And also the Bruce and Maureen Duchaine for boarding up the concession stand for the winter. And now, we are on to Boy with the Boot 3D replica presentation by.
Hello.
Oh, I'm sorry, are there, is there public, do we have public comments this evening? There are no public comments, so now, we are at Boy with the Boot 3D replica presentation.
How are you folks? Hey, good. So we're here just as an information session. I'd like to answer any questions. What you guys are looking for, what we can do to, to facilitate the replication of the boy in the boot. Um, we've actually worked on this in the past. So we have a 3D model of a small boy in the boot, um, from years past, probably in two years now, but we had somebody that had a very small one. We've already scanned and replicated. I'm familiar with the project. I am unfortunately familiar with the destruction that was caused to the original, um, product. So, um, a great application in, in using 3D printing and 3D scanning is, it's not the cheapest thing in the world, obviously, but it is. Once all the hard work is done, so once we scan it, we digitize it, we create everything, that works behind us. And then if something were to happen to it, it's archived at that point. There's a digital copy of it. It can be replicated, it can be created. So you have, A, a digital version, and then we have a physical mechanical version. And then that mechanical version can also be scaled size-wise, so if you guys wanted little memorial ones or something, those can all be reproduced very easily after all that initial hard work. So we've done many projects, kind of above this. Uh, a current one we're working on is, uh, a set of sculptures for the Saratoga History Museum. It's called Spit and Spat. If you've ever gone down and you've gone to their large, um, outdoor garden area, there's two massive sculptures that spit water each other, spit and spat. So we digitized them, shrunk them down to something that they use as bookends. We cast them in marble, uh, a casted marble, so it's very heavy, very durable. But same thing, we've scaled this giant seven-foot sculpture down to twenty inches, retained a high level of detail, put water passages through it so they can make small miniature fountains. Uh, and then endlessly make replicas for them. So, perfect application of additive, lots of different features that you can do, um, and use cases and digitization. It really just, a perfect use case for this.
Okay, so we have, we have the, um, presentation in front of us, the scope of work?
Yep. Yep, so we can do ninety-nine percent of everything in-house, that's kind of what we specialize in. The only thing we aren't is artists. We don't, we don't paint.
We got artists. We got artists.
Perfect. Uh, so the colors, if we have artists we work with, again, because we're not artists, um, she's up in Maine, she's amazing, she's done, um, a ton of the artistic stuff. We do project for the airline industry, so, uh, engineers will build these really cool water crafts and airplanes and she does all of our graphics for the airplanes. So she's amazing at this stuff. She's familiar with the process and how 3D printing, we prep the plastics for additive paint. So basically, paint sticks to this plastic, um, adheres to it. It's a sealed coat, so weather, winter, doesn't hurt them. It, it's a complete turnkey process from us, so we'll start with a 3D scan and we'll end up handing you a sculpture.
Was, was the mold and cast thing that you talked about here, cause you have casting if required and then you have mold and cast options available. What does that, what does that refer to?
So if you do smaller sculptures, um, memorials, we can do physical cast objects, so we can do, we have a casting house in Maine that will do bronze, brass, um, true sculptures. Um, and then we can do audited marble, which is a simulated marble sculpture, and then you can just do plaster, plain, nothing special. So we have, um, a couple of options and what you do with the end result, obviously the goal is to do a full life-size replica. And then we can do casting and all kinds of other stuff, as ancillary features.
But the main thing is actually just this, this plastic.
Correct, yeah, the production of the actual sculpture in ASA, uh, so ASA is an ABS derivative, it's what the plastic you have in your car. Um, we use it in 3D printing, uh, because it's used to be stable, so it can sit in the sun, raw, and it doesn't degrade over time. And then that would be painted, which would add another level of protection to it, so it's just a super durable material. And it's one option, again, for production. There's, you can have it cast in full metals, if we want them back to bronze, we can do plastic. So, we've got an endless option of reproduction methods.
The water, water part, you can't put that tube in.
Correct, so we would engineer the actual passage with whoever is going to install it. So we wanna make sure that the hose comes out where your team is bringing them out the inlet. Yep, so we, we can set up all of that, um, in our design processing phase, and then we can hide the pump internally.
Do you have to scan the tube first, then the statue, no?
Nope, so we just need the statue and then we just need the diameter of the tube, and then we'll create a digital tube.
Okay, yeah. In, in coding outgoing.
Yep, 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 it'll, it'll go in the bottom of his foot, we'll say, and it'll come out the front of his boot. And we have full control over where that hose goes, where you want it, how it's inlet. Any connectors or connections at that point, um, that's all easily settable.
You, you were connected with the Randolph University, uh, the state?
I think that was the other, that was the other presentation.
Oh, there's somebody else?
Yes.
Gotta have more than one. So we do work with the state, so, um, currently we're in a project with the state to capture all of the historic sculptures, uh, stone sculptures and all the rest areas. Um, so the state's waiting for funding now, as we know funding's fun, but we've, um, gone through that whole project process and done test scans, so. Our goal is, and hopefully now, probably a couple of years, is to capture all of those large life-size sculptures, digitize them, put them in the state's archive. And then if something were to happen to those, we have the ability to give them the digital copies and then have re-carved or rebuilt, um, from a digital model, so.
So, if you were to do it, how would you do it? Where would you do it?
We would do that at our facility in Springfield, Vermont.
Where is it?
Springfield, Vermont.
Oh Springfield.
Yep, we're down Springfield. We would digitize the model wherever it is. So if it's in your town hall, we'll come here, yep, we'll come here. Uh, we just need enough area to get around it with our systems, about a foot. This never leaves the building. We capture the entire object and that's really the end of us until we bring it back for you.
It does have a base. I don't know if it comes out more than a foot from the statue, but it does have a, it's mounted on a base.
As long as.
You see it straight in the next room?
I've seen it, I haven't seen it tonight, but I've seen it before. As long as we can slide it out, we just need to get our scanning system about a foot from it. And that's, that's, we can catch it, because of the detail we wanna capture, it's probably gonna take us about a half a day. So I expect four to six hours of us on-site getting everything set up. Um, our systems, I don't know what you've quoted other people, but our systems are non-contact, non-marketer. So most traditional 3D scanning systems on the market today require you to put these little stickers on objects, and that's how the systems track it. We use an optical tracking system that has a tripod in the head and our handheld unit, and the tripod watches our capture unit, so we don't touch the models. We have a lot of competitors that put stickers on it. They'll use what we call a matting agent. We invested in a very expensive system to eliminate all of that, so we don't touch the objects, we don't mat them. There's never a contact with the object, other than us setting it up to a spot that we can get around it, and that's the last contact we ever have with the object. So there's no risk in damaging it from a paint, something, we just, we don't touch it. So it's, that was a lot of the archive work for the state wanted, so we've done some artistic restoration, um, and it's always, don't touch, don't touch, don't, and that's great. So our systems never come in contact, um, and we can capture accuracy down to a half of a human hair. So any unique characters in the sculpture will be retained digitally. The caveat to that is we can't always reproduce that in plastic. So I can gather all that data for future use, but in order to print it, we get about twice that in printing, so, um, a lot of that's handwork. But as far as the actual digitization and archival purposes, we capture all of the data during that process. And that's all, um, a handoff, a deliverable to you, is that digital replica. So it goes and gets stored and archived in your system and then you have the physical model as well.
Great.
You have a sense of how heavy the finished product is, something that size?
With everything said and done, I would be surprised if yours was sixty-five pounds. Yeah, it's a, so the process in additive, we don't produce, uh, monolithic or solid components. It's a lattice of reinforcement interior, so we print an outer shell in multiple thicknesses and that creates your feature. And then internally to that is a geometric pattern of reinforced structure, so it's a hollow component for the most part, we'll, we'll say it's hollow. Uh, but there is a reinforcing structure inside of those and that is, uh, a number of reasons. A, when we print something, if we were to print a solid, as it is, this print's going to be about a hundred and eighty to three hundred hours, depending on, again, how much detail and we go into it. So it's going to be a very long print. If it were solid, it would be six to a thousand hours, because of just the process. So, all of it's hollow, it's reinforced, um, it's coated, but weight is very. weight is very light, certainly compared to a cast metal piece.
So I think the other quote we had is for a solid piece, isn't it? Right? And how much do we know, I, I think the video's a little bit more than this one.
So what, do you know the process they're using?
Can I ask you, so this can stay out all, all year?
Correct, yep, so we're using a plastic that's UV-stable and it's weatherproof, so yeah, it's weather-safe, again, on top of the base plastic that we use is safe, it's also going to be painted, that paint will stop any UV, and then it will be clear-coated with the UV penetrant, so other than act of maliciousness, it will last in the weather endlessly.
And years-wise?
Years, years and years and years, your degradation is going to be in the paint just being, the base plastic material is what we call forever plastic, so if you were to throw it away, it doesn't have any characteristics that can't break down because it is a UV-stable plastic, so it's going to be here until somebody unfortunately damages it, or we go for another paint replica, because the paint's gonna be the first thing to go.
So in your estimate, it says total range 650 to 7800 for the raw 3D replica?
Yep.
Up to 9,000 for professional paintwork.
Correct, yep, so that swing between 78 and 9,000 is the outsourcing for painting, and the window 68 to 72 is just some unknowns that we don't know how long it's gonna take to scan.
At the most, 10,000 for everything done?
Yep.
Yeah, I just looked at the, the other bit, we, we don't talk about their price necessarily, but they did say it was for a 300 to 600 pound.
So they're casting that?
They're casting.
Yeah, do you find out what process they're using, there's a chance we can go to a full cast, again, it's not necessarily advantageous, there's not a huge monetary reason to go all that route to go a cast, again, if the end purpose is to put a sculpture up that's durable and weather-resistant, we're gonna fulfill that, again, maliciousness aside, somebody's gonna break something if they're gonna break it, a solid object is probably gonna be a little bit more durable than a hollow object, but they're gonna break that expensive one, or they're gonna break the less expensive one, so, again, with that said, I mean, the only thing we're gonna do to make this thing bulletproof is go steel and have it cast in iron and make it impermeable, so the, yeah, the handoff there is, you know, if this thing gets broken, again, it's easy for us to then replicate it, we have all the digital version, and we can print another one, and depending on, again, how the town wants it to go, we could make it so that the arms come off, the boot comes off, so if somebody breaks an arm off, we just get you a new arm. Just a thought, we have that capability, again, as long as we know going into the design process, we're making the joint so they can be removed, so you know, if somebody breaks the boot off, we just print a new boot, get it painted, and put a new boot on, that is an option as well.
And start to finish, what, without being rushed, what would a reasonable timeframe be?
Your four to six months.
Okay.
Yep, yeah, and that's certainly not rushed, there's just a lot of pieces to the puzzle, so.
Okay, now, with the one, with one being cast and the other being the hollow, is there any, would it be basically the same finished product, like the same amount of detail and everything?
You would be hard-pressed to see the difference in a painted product, I mean, once the sealants go on, all, everything is painted and coated, it's, your difference is going to be, if the same artist paints it, you're, it's gonna be hard-pressed to see a difference, at that point, it's gonna be the artist's interpretation of the paint and the art, but the look, the surface, the texture is gonna be identical most.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay?
Yeah?
Yes.
Really helpful.
Is everybody satisfied?
Awesome.
Thank you so much for your presentation.
Absolutely, we're happy to help and answer questions, if you guys say to chat more, send us a message, we'll happily answer.
Thanks.
If you need samples, if you guys want to see what surfaces look like, we can print up some faux sculptures and send them down, or we can come and visit and show you what the material looks like if you move forward, what can you expect, so we're happy to do that as well.
Excellent.
Thank you so much.
I'm safe? There you go, awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you, have a great one, Sanchez, and I do.
I'm gonna want that, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, have a good night.
I think we've had our assault Sanchez discussion.
Yeah, yeah, I think we have, I don't think there's anything else we need to discuss right now on that.
Yeah.
Okay, we are now at quarterly financials.
Unless there are any questions, there's nothing too extreme going on, the miscellaneous expense on page two, that really is the boy in the boot, that was Wayne's bill, which I didn't see anything that was too out of range.
What's this, this is just a naive question, when's our fiscal year?
We end June 30th, July 1st to June 30th, so this is just the first quarter, so, there really isn't, you know, I'm not seeing anything that is out of whack, you know, our assistant town clerk's a little, slightly higher than a quarter because Kim and I have been, you know, we worked out of the same pool of money for a while, so, you know.
Training.
Training.
Always costs more.
You know, I just, I don't, if you've got any questions, I don't, I just don't see anything that's not pretty much where it should be.
So if anyone has any questions?
Income's a little above, so that's a good thing, and then.
Yeah.
I mean, the Kenworth truck is way over, but it is what it is, right?
It's getting, it's getting better, it's gonna keep going up.
The highway department is, most of that expense comes in the winter, is that true? I'm just looking at, the total line for highway department, we've only spent 8%?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, your, your extra hours, your sand, your salt, major breakdowns, usually are in the winter.
So we should expect that to go up in the winter? Makes sense?
Cutting edges, stuff like that, chains.
You know, in rec expense, we really won't have much more until spring, you know, so.
Yep. Any other questions on this? I think we're good.
Looks pretty good.
Okay, I'm gonna go home and feed my kids, bye-bye.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you, Jill. Okay, we are now at the telecommunication tower in East Wallingford, so we have a summary of a 60-day advance notice document from Vermont Towers LLC for the construction of 140-foot lattice communication tower on the Seward property in East Wallingford, and Erica's here, and Naomi's here, and why don't we start with Erica?
I'm just giving you the information that you may or may not know, this is a 60-day notice, which means that the application is not into the PUC yet, the, this also, a copy of this also went to the Rutland Regional Planning Commission, they don't meet until the second Tuesday of the month, so they won't meet, but it will be on the agenda, I can guarantee you that, so, one of the questions that's always asked at that committee is, is the town aware of this, does the town support this, does the town not support this or anything, it's too early to really say if you support, if you don't support, or the like, I'm just giving you background information, that's all. One of the things that you might, we might want to consider, and again, I'm just throwing out ideas, is a balloon test to see if it really will do what it says it's going to do, Mount Holly did that at the Mount Holly Flats, it was done.
Balloon?
Balloon test, basically, you put a tower.
Two minutes to do it, too.
Yes, yes, exactly, and I frankly didn't see anything like that in there, I would be questioning that because of the mountains and everything in East Wallingford, but they followed the rules, they followed what the town plan says, the zoning regulations, ladders for telecommunications, they did do their due diligence as far as I can tell with following what is necessary for the town and also for the Rutland Regional Plan, I'm not saying I approve it or anything, again, this is strictly information, by the way, I chair the committee at the RRPC, so I would be giving them the same information that I'm giving you, so I just thought, since I had to be here for another issue, if you had any questions, that as the zoning administrator or rep of the RRPC, if you need, if you had any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them, or to the information.
Do they have to apply to you for permit? Huh?
They have to apply for a permit, yes, it, and not me, it has to go before the Development Review Board, however, this is where the state and the towns always have this push-pull, if the PUC approves it, they're probably.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Now, Erica, if a town resident has a concern about this.
Should address it to the, should address it to you?
Okay.
Well, in, also in written, it's much better to put it in a letter, also the PUC, and send it direct to the PUC too, but obviously, one of the questions, as I said, that's always asked at the committee, once the application is in, not in yet, that, does the town approve it, if the town approves it, generally speaking, and I'm not saying 100%, boy, you can tell I'm a college professor, the RRPC will go ahead and give it what we call a letter one, which is, yes, it is in, the town approves it, it's in conformance with the plans.
Yes.
If the select board does not approve it, that is one of the things that is mentioned to the letter that goes up there, and the question is, why not, then depending on what the answer is, the PUC, sorry, the regional plan may or may not send a letter, they don't have to send a letter of support or disapproval, it's.
Do we need to have?
My suggestion is you have a public hearing, if that's what you're.
That's right, yeah.
Okay.
Just one, it required, or no, not required, but?
It's not required, but I would, personally speaking, this is a personal issue, I, as a resident of the town, we've, or who's going to be affected, I'm not, but you are, I would have a public hearing, and it could be during a regular meeting, or you could hold, or you could hold a special meeting, most of the towns that I'm aware of on something like this, either the planning commission does it, or the select board, my feeling is, I think it would carry much more weight with the select board, but the planning commission, we meet next week, it's a little too early, they're not gonna submit this until December, they have until December to submit to the PUC, so it probably wouldn't even be January before we got the application back, and I would not hold hearings before that at all.
Oh, yes.
You wait until you get the application, and then we can hold a public hearing on that, once the application has been received.
That's what I would do, just to be on the safe side, but, but, I mean, obviously, a resident says, I want to be heard, you know, you want to hear it.
Exactly.
Is it wise to request a balloon test now, though, so before the application's filed, so that, that's part of the application?
Do we do that after, you get the?
You're, you don't respond to this at all?
Right.
No, but I'm saying proactively, before, I mean, if they, if they file an application that says, we have heard, you know, we've heard from the town, they would really like a balloon test, that's gonna be part of our application, I'm just wondering if, you know, to be proactive.
Yeah, you can, I would get in touch and say, are you, you know, are you going to perform a balloon test, and if not, why not, and, and they may say, we don't need it, I do know when they did it to the Mount Holly Flats, it didn't cover as much as they thought it would, this was several years ago, and they've done them in other places, and, you know, the other thing is, I mean, it's 140 feet high, I haven't been up to see where it would be planted, if you will, and I'll throw the question out, it's a rhetorical question, would it be feasible to ask for it to be more or less of the Christmas tree thing, kind of in with everything or not, I mean, what's the surrounding territory like, in the sense of, is this gonna stick above the trees, or will the trees eventually get up to it, so it's hidden.
No, no more than 140 trees, 140-foot trees.
Yeah, I know.
So it would, it would be above?
Yeah.
Its location is literally where the sun rises and the moon rises, and it'll block the view.
Yeah.
Or field.
So, I mean, it's, it has nothing to do with zoning, but.
Is the town getting paid for this structure, or just the sewer?
I, no.
No, no, it's just the family that would be getting?
Yeah.
Like five thousand? It's all private property, no town income at all, we have a cell tower here, we get income from, but nothing on, this is private property.
Is it a pine tree, they're putting a pine tree up, or they're putting a mono tower?
They're putting the usual tower up.
No pines around there, it's all sugarcane. Yeah, I think there's a pine tree up.
It's also in the middle of a field that they were using for cattle and corn.
Could I ask a question, would there be any possible conflict of interest for the town, since we do get rental income or lease income from the Church Street Tower, this tower says it's for Verizon, I think, but they would rent to other carriers, so maybe our carrier would decide it's cheaper to go rent on that tower?
Yeah, but if you, it might be, but you wouldn't have the same coverage, for example, phone company A is over here on Church Street, if they take it out of here, that means there's no coverage down here, most of the time, they'll have it in two different places, so you may, you probably won't, and I would not think that there's a conflict of interest because you are the governing body, you know, and.
They would probably leave it, because that's how we got it.
Yeah.
Somebody put one up there, and then they left it, and somebody else picked it up.
So a balloon test is they're actually testing that the signal is gonna get the coverage, it seems like they would want to do that anyway, it wouldn't be in their interest to put the thing up and not.
It would seem to me, but sometimes, they don't always do it, and as I said, when they did it, and I do want to say it's Mount Holly, there was a problem, and, and of course, they have to do it at a certain time when there isn't a lot of wind blowing.
Yeah.
Makes it a little difficult, and they, they did find that it did not cover as much as they thought it did, so they had to readjust a little bit, they should do it, I mean, it, in my opinion, my opinion only, it should be somewhat of a matter of course, the one that I'm citing, and again, please understand, this was like three or four years ago, they said it would be great for emergency services and everything, and it would reach much further, come to find out, it really didn't, but they compensated somehow for it, there's also, I mean, you could go back through the records of the RRPC, but again, the RRPC looks to, is it in conformance with the town plan, is it in conformance with the regional plan, that is their main concern, and so it's really up to the town to decide if it's gonna help the town, if it's not gonna help the town, support and that type of thing.
What's the other acronym you use with PUC, what is that?
RRPC, oh, PUC?
Yeah.
Public Utilities Commission, they're the ones that do the approval.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I hate acronyms myself, and I apologize for using them, RRPC is Rutland Regional.
Yeah, I knew that one.
That one, I knew.
Yeah, we all know that one.
It seems that we should defer to the application actually being filed.
Exactly.
And then hold a public hearing.
Yep.
Publicized widely.
Mm-hmm, yes.
That sounds like January.
Yes.
Okay.
And remember, at any point between now and then, and even after that, you can always request a representative coming to address you for any issues. That is in the application, in this, that says, if you want...
So if we want to, we can request their appearance in front of us?
The balloon test, I thought, when I heard about a balloon test in Tenement, I thought they were floating a balloon so people could see...
Yes.
The height of the tower. Is that part of it, too?
Yes, that's also part of it.
Okay.
Yes.
I think that would be good.
Can I say a few things that you guys might want to consider?
Sure.
Before even the idea of a balloon test? In 2011, the World Health Organization...
Could you speak up, please?
Sure. In 2011, the World Health Organization classified the FFEMFs, or the radio frequency electromagnetic field radiation that comes from cell towers, as a Group IIb carcinogen. Anything within 10,000 feet, as of right now, the proposed tower is going to be about 1,700 feet from my front door, 675 feet from the road where people walk their dogs on a regular basis. It would be the prominent view from three houses out of their front door. I don't want to ever, like, deny a neighbor income, but when that income is based on something that could cause my family harm, such as cancer, there's sleep deprivation issues, headaches, attention deficit, it has been all linked to the radiation that comes from these towers. And unfortunately, I, I don't know whether or not the town has the insurance for damages from long-term exposure to these radiations, because most insurance companies apparently don't cover them, because they consider them too high-risk, and put them on the same level as lead and asbestos. And I feel like it would open the town up to lawsuits because of possible carcinogens. So it's just something to consider before any of this other stuff. And there's, I've been doing like a ton of research, and there's a really great, I can forward you the, the link if you'd like, of a very interesting research put out by the Environmental Health Trust, the possible damages that these can cause.
So the rule of the town, if we said, like, we don't want those things here, does that kill it?
No.
It's just, it just goes into as part of the decision process?
Yes, that's all it does. And if the PUC approves it, if the PUC approves it, what, that's why the 60-day notice for the towns and the concerned citizens to gather materials to support or just, or not support. It really is the Public Utilities Commission that has the last word on it.
Okay.
They do defer, to a certain extent, to letters that they've received and things like this. I can't speak for them, because I'm, I don't serve on that committee, but, and they do take a lot into consideration, but, you know, and quite frankly, the RRPC, when the application comes in, again, 60 days notice is very different than the application. This could be a 60-day notice, and they could say, "No, it's not worth it," and then toss the whole thing aside. So it's not a no-deal.
Right.
Which is why it's a 60-day.
Yeah.
But until the application comes in, you can gather facts, information, like that, which I think is great, right? But nothing's going to happen until an, an application goes in. My suggestion might be that you do schedule a rep to come in, and ask if, when the applicant, after the application is submitted, that the rep comes in during the public hearing, and they're here taking it, and taking in the information, just like anybody else.
Okay. So have a rep come during the public hearing?
I would do that. And you could request, you could request one to come tomorrow, I mean, you know.
And this is a Verizon rep?
No, this would be the Tower rep.
The Tower rep.
Because, I, on further research, even Verizon, in its fine print, in your service agreement, lists these towers as a pollutant. And also, they addressed their annual board members through their 10K, stating that they were aware that they would be open to lawsuits due to carcinogen. So they're aware that these things cause cancer within 10,000 feet.
This is one of those dilemmas where there's compelling arguments for cell phone service in East Wallingford. It's a constant complaint, and in fact, access to 911 is sometimes impossible.
Yep.
We can't even talk to the, to the town trucks. We can't do the radio.
But there is cell service in East Wallingford now.
Yeah, AT&amp;T.
Of Verizon.
And I have T-Mobile, so I use Wi-Fi at the house.
But it's, it's funny, you say there's a cancer issue with that, when we've got one sitting 50 feet over our head here.
Right, but it's not a 140-foot, multi, multi-carrier one, right?
I don't think the height would make any difference.
No, it's, it's the, I think it's the, it's the field.
Yeah, I'm actually surprised it's, it's been allowed so close to the school, because children's epidermis apparently soaks in the radiation at a much higher level.
What's your source of this information?
I have been researching all weekend, but the one that was the most in-depth was the Environmental Health Trust.
Environmental Health Trust?
Yeah. I can, do you want me to email?
I'll find it.
View the, the link, and then, because it's like a 50-page document and videos.
Yes. That would be very helpful.
What was it?
Environmental Health Trust.
Health Trust?
Yes, Environmental Health Trust.
She's going to send it to me, rather than forward it to all of us.
Sandy's going to be getting it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for, and thank you, Naomi, for coming in.
Yeah, thanks for listening to my concerns, I appreciate it. And I'm also up for the next one.
Okay. So let's see. Okay, so now we are on to Veterans Memorial Park use request.
Can I add one, right? Can I add this?
Yes, yep.
Just want to make sure I have the right one.
Okay. And they know I'm...
Good evening.
You, too.
Thanks.
You, too. Put it. Okay, so now, Gray Wicker, on behalf of the Democratic Party, sent an enclosed request seeking use of Veterans Memorial Park on November 11th to honor veterans. He assured that there would be no demonstrations or political statements.
Move approved.
Let's just see the...
A move approved.
Hold on.
No, no, I can make that motion.
You, you can. Okay, so...
We can't even discuss it until we've made a motion.
I don't know if we need a motion on this, if we make, if we have consensus.
How, making the motion?
Okay, so we have a motion.
You need it now, because I made it.
My second motion.
Okay. The motion is...
Whether you need it or not, you got it.
Okay.
So you made a motion to approve the request?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. And we have a second.
Yes. There we go.
Do I say this? I was concerned to see this. 20 years ago, honoring veterans would not be the purview of one party or another party. I think the whole town should serve, turn out and honor veterans on Veterans Day.
Yeah, Republicans could do it, too.
That's true.
I think it came up because there was some criticism on Front Port Forum that the Democrats were not supporting veterans.
Ah.
And so the Democratic Party meeting, I was there, they said, "What can we do to just sort of demonstrate our support of veterans without making it a political, you know, not having signs, not having anything like that?" And they said, "Why don't we just sponsor coffee and donuts on Veterans Day?" That was kind of the thinking behind it.
That helps.
Which is also one of the reasons why the statement that they, no political statements or signs will be there.
Right, but actually...
And because Gray and I composed the letter, and we deliberately put that in.
Yeah.
So nobody, unless they ask, will know who's sponsoring it.
Right.
It's not going to be sponsored by the Democratic Committee, it's just...
I was wondering that.
No, this is coffee and donuts, and I also told, because I was at the same meeting, I also told everybody, if you all don't support it, which of course, I would thoroughly encourage as a veteran myself, by the way, that if that didn't work, my front yard is available. So they'll, they will get it. It would be better at Memorial Park, I think would have a lot more say-so, but if necessary, a private home, because I face seven, and it's...
So it's basically going to be...
Is that our property?
Yes, it is, I checked it. It does belong to the town of Wallingford.
Okay, good.
Yeah, and at, at the meeting, someone brought up, like, should we have a little sign-up sheet for Democrats? And we said, "No."
No, nothing.
Ask to be completely apolitical.
This is basically, thank you for your service to the country.
And it sort of goes along with any other Veterans Day celebrations that are going on in Wallingford that day?
Exactly. Actually, there isn't any, that's it.
Okay.
The, the elementary school has one on Monday, the Rotary normally has some Veterans Day dinner on Saturday, but unfortunately, that, I think as of this morning, was canceled.
Yes, I, yes, it has, is what I heard, unfortunately.
Oh, that's too bad.
Yeah. Disappointed daughter.
Yes.
Oh, that's too bad.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, well, it happens, unfortunately.
Yeah.
So that really is the only, the only thing, and I have also told the committee that they can make coffee at my house, and run it over, so it'll be hot.
Okay.
My concerns are related, I think we should move the vote.
So let's, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Erica.
Anytime. And unlike Joe, I don't have to feed anybody, because I fed them before I came. Y'all have a good night.
You, too, thank you. We are now on to School Street sidewalk project. And we have two items here. So we know what happened with V-Trans, and then the intersection signalization upgrade, where there was a four-row went to a three-row. There was additional work for VHB engineers, which we hired for the design phase. This work was not part of the contract, and therefore, there are additional costs. We have an email from Martin Regional Planning Commission, Stephanie Bork, as well as VHB's overview and amendment. We've been told by Stephanie that V-Trans will reimburse these costs as eligible expenses, but we have a set grant amount with V-Trans, and anything over is paid by Wallingford 100%.
I'm not getting the connection between those two statements. So, V-Trans will reimburse it, but...
So I think even in the additional funding, when we received that, you know, they said, "This is, this is the money you get, we're giving you this much money, and we're reimbursing your costs at 80%, but you have to keep tight track of your budget, because anything over, you know, so when we, when we made out the budget for this additional project, it was X amount of dollars, we didn't calculate in all of this additional right-of-way. So now, when VHB gives us a bill, we can submit it to the state, and they're going to reimburse it for 80, 80%.
Right.
But that original grant was this much money, so at some point, they're not going to keep reversing it 80%, so, you know...
So are we sort of...
Only, like, down the line, maybe something's a little bit cheaper than we thought, so...
So, okay, so they're going to reimburse us for these extra costs, but it's still part of the, it's not like, it's not like an extra amount, it's still part of the...
No, it's going to still be a part of, at some point, V-Trans is going to say, "This is how much money you get, so as you're sending us bills, we're going to pay them at 80%, but at some point, we're done."
Okay, so...
This was just, you know...
How much is, how much extra did we, did this?
$4,897, $4,897 is the extra expense.
$48,000, did you say?
$4,800.
Okay, okay.
It's just...
Sorry, $4,897.
Okay, well, that's not like a...
It's not, it's not, but this was, V-Trans agreed that this was the right-of-way, we designed everything according to what they agreed to, and then at some point, they, they started this project over here, and they say, "Oh, guess what? It's not what your right-of-way is." So we spent thousands of dollars proving what they already agreed to do to begin with.
And they said, "Hey, yeah, it's, it's a project expense."
Oh, yeah, you were right.
And so now, now we're liable for more money, because they just agreed with themselves.
Right, right, but at least it's not a huge amount of money, it's not a...
It's not.
Right.
But duly noted. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So...
So what do we need to do? We need to authorize you?
Yes.
To, to sign that, Kathy?
So do you approve for me to sign this?
Yes.
Yes.
And now, the second item, there's enclosed a declaration prepared by V-Trans on behalf of the state and town for utilities to relocate lines and authorize them to work within the town right-of-way.
When will we sign it?
Okay. Do we approve of this authorization and want to sign it?
Do we have any choice?
No, I don't think so.
Yeah.
I think we approve.
We do.
Okay.
Resoundingly.
There we are, so there, that is complete. Employee handbook update, minimum age requirement. At the last meeting, you agreed to set the minimum age for municipal employment at 16 years old. Sandy's re, has amended page six of the employee handbook with language to that effect, and we have it enclosed. So do we approve?
Yes, it looks good.
Yes. Great. We are on to agenda building. I know that we are getting into budget season?
Yes, we are. Yippee, our agendas will be pretty full.
Yes, the agenda will be pretty full.
Is there anything, like, as new members, is there anything we should be doing to prepare for budget season? Like, should we look at minutes from last budget season?
Do we have the schedule of what meetings will be when?
Yes, yeah.
So would you like to hear the schedule?
I mean, ahead of time is good.
I mean, it's, it's very helpful to know what's going to be coming up, so Sandy, what's on the docket for budget?
So we do, we start the first meeting in December, and we're going to do capital, town government, and public safety, those are all pretty straightforward. And by the way, this is on the homepage of the website.
Okay.
In that first, in that middle box, the street box of the website, it's right in the middle box there. So public, capital, town government, and public safety are December 1st, December 15th, highway, recreation, and appropriations. January 5th is administration, insurance, and revenue.
Are we going to discuss whether we'll support the idea of asking town meeting to establish a reserve fund?
Yep, we, we'll do that.
I mean, it would be allocating us something to go into...
Yes.
That will be part of capital, I think.
All right, yeah.
Yeah, probably.
So I think we know what our agenda is going to be for...
Yes.
Our current upcoming meetings.
Fun.
Happens every year.
Or, two meetings, first meeting in December.
In December?
Yeah.
And we need three meetings to get it done?
Yeah.
Yes.
Excuse me, Sandy, was in that list, did I hear, library?
That's an appropriations.
That's appropriations, yes. Yep.
I was thinking, before we get into budget season... I was thinking, before we get into budget season, inviting our representative to the library board of trustees to come and just talk to us about the library and challenges and successes.
I think we usually do that when we're, don't we do that at the meeting that we do the budget at?
So if, that would be fun.
Well, most of, has a representative here, not everything for appropriations, because they love them as well.
Before that meeting, yes, that's when the representatives come.
Especially the big ones, like, long rescue.
Yeah, walling through rescue libraries come for the last few ones.
I think the new president of the trustees said she would come to that meeting, and that's excellent, but I'd also, we have, we negotiated someone to hold a seat on the trustees, and I would like that person to also come. I believe it's Mr. Galliano.
Okay. Do they have the liaison come as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Is it called a liaison or the representative?
Liaison.
I thought it was the select board representative to the trustees.
Okay.
Yep.
How is that, I'm not understanding, Todd Galliano is the select board representative to the library?
Yes.
We did that a year ago. Yeah.
Okay.
Want to be the library representative to go to the select board?
Say that again.
I'm just, it sounds backwards, by saying he's the select board representative, he's the library representative to the select board.
I'm not, I can't quote the year, but...
Because he's not on the select board, so it's confusing.
Yeah, it's just...
I think at one point, when the town chose to give a substantial amount to the library in the town budget, they negotiated that in exchange, we would have a representative who would be one of the trustees.
Right.
So that's the history of it.
Wouldn't that normally be one of us, though?
No, I don't think so.
Knowing somebody who's...
It's always appointed somebody.
I think this group chooses someone they'd like to be their representative.
Yes.
Yes, the library nominated.
Yes.
Yeah, and we just approved it.
Okay.
We don't need that.
Okay.
Another whole board.
Exactly. Okay. All right. So now we are on to select board comments and concerns.
I just want to, as part of that, this, this document that got passed around, or that got many copies...
That's in yours, too.
So, as you know...
Chinese, yeah?
And I, and, and Robert, Albert, and the Capitol Committee, there's not really a committee yet, there's only three of us.
Right.
But one of the things we're trying to do is put together a list of all the town's assets.
Great.
So this is a start of that, and it's a, it's a property inventory, and this comes from our tech, our insurance records Sandy provided. The next page is the fleet inventory, or our trucks, and the third page is the bridge inventory, which is, this is surprising to me, I didn't realize we had seven bridges in town that were responsible for maintenance for.
Yes.
And as you see on the, and I think we all know this, the, the last item there is the, it's bridge number 59, but it's the one over Otter Creek on Creek Road. That's the, they have the ratings here, based on the bridge inspection reports, how they were ranked. That's in the condition 1 to 10 scale column, and that is the lowest ranking of all our bridges.
Yes.
They're recommending that it get replaced, so, and I know we have money set aside for that. But what was interesting is like, the, the first one on the list, the bridge that crosses Roaring Brook on Route 140, that over here, they, they were, they said, yeah, this first one, they're saying, they've been recommending for years that we do, uh...
Creek Road?
Seal some of the, no, Creek Road, they know we're, that we need to do, but this other one, they're saying there's some maintenance that we can do, and I don't know who does that, if it's road crew stuff or something like that, but it seems, it just...
It's 140, isn't it? Wouldn't that be the state?
Are you talking about the fire station?
Roaring Brook.
Roaring Brook.
Yeah, by the fire station.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
I would guess that would be it.
Oh, is that the part of it that we don't?
They say, as recommended for years, the joints above the sister T-beams need to be sealed to prevent further leakage, which is deteriorating the T-beam slowly but considerably over time. So I'm just wondering if that should also be in our plan to do some maintenance on that?
What do you think?
Is that something that, like, do we have to hire somebody to do, or?
Yeah, it's, you know, they have to grind it, resurface it, and fill any concrete bad spots in it.
Yeah.
It's nothing the town can do.
Okay. I'm just thinking, like, this, the Creek Road Bridge is like, okay, that needs to be replaced now, but this seems like, what they're saying here is if we did some preventive maintenance, that maybe we could extend the life of the Roaring Fork Bridge, I mean, Roaring Brook Bridge, so that we wouldn't be like, oh, we got to replace that bridge too, now, because we all know, I mean, replacing a bridge is like, huge, huge project.
I'll look at it Wednesday, I'm going to be down working right beside it.
Okay.
We've got other bridges.
They've got, I mean, I don't know if you need it, but there's an inspection report with pictures and everything like that.
Yeah.
This is a complete list of bridges, is it?
Is the bridges, according to the V-Trans, this is the bridges that Wallingford is responsible for maintaining, these seven bridges?
We got to do one in Dougwood.
What bridge on Dougwood?
Dougwood Bridge, yeah.
Oh, that bridge?
That's a culvert. That's a culvert, isn't it?
I think it's a culvert, yeah.
I think that's part of, we, we, we went on a bridge program to replace it, so I don't know. We had to pay $10,000 for a $100,000 bridge back then. Yeah, that was a long time ago.
A long time ago.
Well, it's not on their list.
That bridge. I didn't know.
I mean, it's one, so, like, what we're trying to do is come up with a list of all the things that we might need to spend money on.
This is good to know that that's what they think we're responsible for.
Yeah, yeah, right, well, I need to get a list from somewhere, but one of the things I haven't really looked at is the culverts. How many, like, like, obviously, there's tons and tons of culverts in town, but some of them are going to be just like a plastic pipe, and some of them are going to be something that we might actually have to...
Yeah, replace big ones.
So that should make it into the list, too, but the point is, this whole thing, the point of this exercise is, we talked about coming up with a capital reserve fund, we need to be able to tell people, this is why we need it. Like, we need to, we need to spend this amount of money each year on trucks maintenance, or have a replacement scheduled for trucks, or we need a tractor for the town, so we're using your tractor all the time. You know, something like that, so...
Good for us, too, on budget.
This is the starting point of saying what we're going to need in the next five years.
It's very helpful.
So the, the property inventory came from Sandy, which is based on our insurance schedules.
What about the concession stand on the lake?
Oh, that's true.
Yeah, it could be missing, that could be, because the insurance, that's one of the reasons I wanted to get this in front of you guys, so we could get information.
So I think, I see the pavilion for Elton Lake, but I don't see the Elton Lake concession stand.
There's a concession stand number 17 on that list?
That's the one down at the Redfield, I believe.
These are the pictures on there.
We have two.
Okay, okay.
In rough shape.
Sandy, I don't know if you got an updated insurance schedule that might be different than what's on here?
They just sent it out today.
Okay.
They want, the board will review it at, like, the next meeting.
Okay.
So you can see the comparison.
Okay.
So we'll be able to see everything, yeah.
Yeah.
Great.
But, so, yeah, this is, so first cut at this, this is what we're working on, is coming up with like a list of everything the town owns that we would need to spend our reserve money on.
Uh huh.
And part of it is to say to the town, like, hey, we need to start putting away money every year because we know these expenses are coming up.
Right, yes, that's great.
Just wanted you to see it where it was so far.
Thank you very much. And thank you, Ann. Excellent. Okay.
Not that we can control where they are, but I heard a number of complaints about lack of police presence during Halloween, and a lot of unsafe traveling going on in the dark.
A lack of what?
Police presence, sheriffs, that they were not like their normal presence, unless we...
Do we know if we had any sheriff presence on Halloween?
That's just part of their coverage all the, every year.
Okay.
I remind them every year, too.
Okay.
Both Cabbage Night and Halloween Night. Yeah, so I know there's nothing we can do unless we request, like we do for Memorial Day, and ask for extra.
Okay.
Yeah, along with the complaints of the truck, the large truck that parks in front of the church, right down here, blocks traffic and makes it hard to see.
Well, that was difficult, having that large.
And this is about the third year in a row.
So they've been doing it now over the last three years?
Yeah. Yeah, because you can't, it's hard to...
No, it was very tough to see.
Yeah, with all the bright lights.
Yep.
But that's, once again, not in our real purview, but it is blocking the road.
Should I move? I move to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing a personnel issue and not to return to open session.
We have, like, Phil invited?
We didn't finish this again.
I would include Phil.
We ended this at the beginning of Halloween. We've, we've had this at the beginning of Halloween.
Yeah, but we didn't do Jeff Duchesne's thing.
Or we need to do the, there was something else that was on the agenda?
I was on the clock, but he still hasn't gotten a price, so...
Okay. He doesn't have a price yet.
Yeah, no, but I mean, we can, we can wait for, we're not in a hurry.
No.
No, time is on our side.
And was there another agenda item? Because there were two additions.
What was the other one we, oh, no, we did the bulk mail, did we do the bulk mail permit, yeah?
No, we haven't.
Okay, what?
Can we do the bulk mail permit first, please? So we have from Gilbert Hunt Library, a request for a permit for the bulk mailing that they do of their letter.
Yep.
This is usually, this has come up to us before, and we've approved it in the past, and so they're making the same request, however, they missed the meeting deadline, and they need, they need approval now in order to get the letter out in time.
Who approved the library request for bulk mailing?
Yeah.
Second? Okay, great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So bulk mailing is approved, and now I am.
We don't televise executive session, right?
Did we have to approve, did we approve the executive session?
I'll second the motion to go into executive session.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.